I'd like to call to order the August 5th meeting of the Northfield Township's Zoning Board of Appeals at 7:00 PM. If you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Thank you very much, and I'd like to ask Mr. Colleke to please proceed with the roll.
Here.
Present.
Here, sir.
Here. And Ms. Stephens is absent with notice. Also joining us is Lisa Lombal, the Recording Secretary, Jim Nelson on our audio/video, Ms. Burt as our staff, and also Kurt Wyland, our zoning administrator. All right, next item on the agenda is adopt the agenda.
So move with the Chairman.
Motion, do I hear support?
Support.
Motion and support to adopt the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. Next is correspondence, you will find that Mr. Wyland did hand out to you another packet, I believe it was inclusive in the original packet we received, it's just in color, which we appreciate. So, without that, we'll move on to public hearings. In the back of the room is a copy of our public hearing procedure, if you'd like to have a copy, I will be going over it as well. So, is there a motion to open the hearing?
A motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Otto, supported by Del Favor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right, so, the, this is for case JZBA-150007, Michael and Lisa Gersky of Groseal, for a variance, for a required street-side yard setback, which would be a 15-foot variance from the required 30-foot variance from section 36-280, I'm sorry, section 36-248-4B, side yard setback, to build a 1,450-square-foot home. The property is located at 8111 Beach Avenue in the Horseshoe Lake subdivision. The parcel number is B0208376002, and is owned, single-family residential, two. The, what we will do from here is we're going to follow a very meticulous process, where first, we will call on the applicant to come forward and make a statement of support and provide any additional evidence supporting their request. We will then go to the staff and have Mr. Wyland present the substance of the appeal, as well as any facts, including site conditions or uses of adjacent lands that are relevant utility and street capacities and so forth. Once that is done, we will call on the public. First, we will call on those in favor of the applicant, second, we will call on those that are opposed to the applicant's request. There, the applicant may have an opportunity, at the discretion of this board, to rebut any comments that are made. We will then call for a close of the public hearing. Tonight, we have two cases, so we will go, after the first case is heard, we will go to the second case, and then at such time, we will close the public hearing, and under new business, number eight on our agenda, we will then conduct deliberations and take any actions, if actions are deemed appropriate. So, with that, I'd like to invite the applicant to the microphone, please. You're here?
Yes.
Mr. Gersky?
Yes.
Yes. Can you step to the microphone, state your name and address, and this is your opportunity to provide a statement of support for what you're asking for, and if you have anything else to add that was not included in your packet, please feel free to tell us about that at this time.
Michael Gersky, 24647, Haley Crescent, Groseal, Michigan.
Thank you.
And I'd like to present photos of what we intend to build.
Yep.
Just approach them. Oh, there that goes.
While you're speaking, I'll look through these and pass them around.
We recently purchased the property at 8111 Beach, and we're trying to build a 1,450-square-foot log cabin, however, the easement, the setback off the easement on the north side is prohibitive to really fit anything of substance in that area. So, there's a 30-foot setback right there, and we're asking for 15 feet of that. And from there would be 15 feet to the easement, and then the easement of 40 feet, and then our neighbor who's 30 feet setback. I've spoken to the neighbor who has no objections to our request, and I've also searched the area, and I don't know why, I don't see where any services of the township would be impeded.
Okay. Is there anything else you have at this time?
No, but our intent, well, yes, our intent would be to maintain that property as-is, if not better, to the standards of the township, and I don't see any negative effect to the neighbors in the area or the property holders.
Okay, we may ask you up again at the time of, after the public has spoken, and during our deliberations, we may have questions for you.
Sure.
All right, thank you, you can have a seat. Now, I'd like to proceed to Mr. Wyland, who can provide his information in regards to the appeal.
Well, I don't necessarily, the proposed structure itself is very limited, as far as actually the intrusion into that setback area, so it's, it appears to, they've tried to do a good job of keeping the focus of the structure in the allocated area that is permitted by the ordinance. The side-street setback is off a street that the odds are will obviously never be built, but of course, vacating a platted street like that would probably take quite a cumbersome effort to try to get that taken away, so I believe that the work that they plan to do from this proposal is a minimal amount of disturbance to that lot, and I certainly would recommend supporting them in their efforts.
Okay, thank you very much. I will remind our board, the only item we're really addressing tonight is whether or not the encroachment is appropriate or not. While I do appreciate the images, and that helps us in understanding what your vision is, the item before us today is whether or not to allow that. So, the next item, and we may come back to Mr. Wyland during our deliberations, next item is for the public, if there is anyone here in support of the applicant, you can come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Robert McCowen, 4672 Willowbrook Lane, Ann Arbor, Michigan. I'm a general contractor and a home builder. I just recently built a home to the north of Mike's property, and that was a larger site, it was two and a, two-thirds lots, so he had a little more flexibility in the design when it came to building that one there, and that home's about 2,100 square feet, so significantly bigger than what Mike is proposing on his. One of the things that I evaluated when I was looking at the site with Mike is that at a 30-foot setback, which is about 80 feet back from the edge of the gravel to start with, the lot's seven feet wide at the front, so that in itself is very restrictive, as you can well imagine, when you add the complexity of the 30-foot setback off the 40-foot easement for the road. So, in order to have any kind of a garage, you would actually have to go 47 feet back, and that still wouldn't allow any room for a front entry, a door, into the front of the home. So, given the size of his footprint, he's greatly restricting his ability to build something that I think would make practical sense on that site, and even though the site flares at the back, when you add a garage, or even a carport to this, you end up with only 12 feet behind the, behind the garage to actually build living space, so that in itself, I believe, is the hardship with this lot, is the narrow portion of the front of the lot at 30-foot setback. Now, if you change the 30-foot setback from the edge of the 40-foot easement, then it gives you a lot more flexibility on placing the home in there, and as Kurt suggested, that easement's been overgrown for many, many years, and it's not likely that it's going to be coming roach anytime soon, and I would anticipate that both owners on either side would probably do a good job of cleaning that easement up and getting rid of some invasive species, and perhaps enhance the view of the water from the curve at Beach and Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the applicant? Seeing no one else, we'll move on. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of the applicant? You could please speak, name and address.
Yeah, Ken Johnson, I live on Lakeshore, 8056, and I have a couple of things I'd like to pass out to you. All this is, is, when this was up for sale before, they considered it a non-buildable lot, they taxed it that way too, even though they taxed everybody else, buildable property, so I don't know how they got the description on that. And then in hole two on there, you'd be able to see where they got, Robbie, if you want this one. If you got, hole two, he deemed it were, he said, probably Clayton at the time, deemed it were, he said it wasn't interfering with the wetlands, he said he looked at it there in April, but what he does is, there's another handout here, I'd like to show you. This is, the first one there is this property that is 30 feet, that's on Lakeshore, I'm sorry, Maple. In that water, everybody knows we've had problems with Horseshoe Lake, with flooding and everything. It's that place, that lot's always been under. And, all I want to do is just show you, this, this year, that's probably been over, been underwater twice, and it's not that I have any objections to Michael building a home, I mean, it's good for you, I mean, we'd love to have you. My concern is, if we're not putting this on stilts, Robbie did build another house over there, beautiful home, Robin's a wonderful person to have in our neighborhood. Her pump, that water wasn't even that high this year, and her pump was going non-stop, and I had concerns with her pump, so I went over there and videoed it, asked her if she had a sump in the, you know, if the sump had run continuously all the time, she said yeah, and I knew it run for two days, and my concern was to put a backup in there, because she's going to have problems, and that water really wasn't that high. This year, on that first picture there, well, I got it on my phone, I got it on video, that water really wasn't that high, and it's up on his lot, but it's always been up there. My concern is, where does the water go when we do the flooding? And I know I had an interest in the property, but I tore a structure down because it was always in that water, it did me no good. I got tired of it, and I said, you know, I can't have this in here. We were going to buy it, but paying that amount of money for the dog to have a place to poop was a lot, a lot of money to try to buy that lot. And there is another lot over there that's, that's for sale, that, I mean, it's much, and this is much closer to the lake, the soil conditions are much worse, the water conditions are worse, and I really have a concern for what we're going to do with the water and the setbacks because of the easements we've had. We've had easements, we have roadways, and we have such a small lot, that once you put a home on it, it's, they don't have any place to put anything else but in the road and easement. I don't know if they can meet the 30% rule, and, and even if so, I mean, it all comes down to, we're, we're using association property because we don't have properties conforming with our own toys. It's just, there's a lot there, it is a small lot, at one time, the association and some of the guys around there did have a thought of purchasing a lot and just making it a park area. Now, we got a fellow in here that's going to build on it, and our concern is, what do we do with this water? I mean, if they could put it on stilts, I'd be absolutely ecstatic.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Pardon me, somebody said, well, you can't do a drain field now, if we were on a waterway, or if we were on a water fringe, a flood, a floodway, or a flood, no, if you're on a fringe.
Okay, address me, please.
Pardon me?
Address me, please.
If you're on, if you're on a waterway, or if you're on a water fringe, you have to build a retaining area for the water that you're going to direct from the property you're building, put it in over there. We have five, well, it used to be seven inlets, the only thing is I can count is five, five inlets and one outlet. To me, that's almost like having a river flowing through it. So, we don't use it as a floodway or a flood fringe, but we do have a lot of concerns over on Horseshoe Lake, and we know what hydropower can do, water power, so if you keep building up, and we keep going up on our foundations, you know, eventually, that means, I'm right next to Mike, so that means I can go over there, I can ask for a variance to build a house over there, well, I don't need a variance, I can ask to build a house over there and put rental cabins up, and just keep building up just as high as he is. There's just a fine line, is, when are we going to stop and say that is a flood plain? Like it says here, in old, old two, I was under the impression that was floodwater, even when I went in and saw Pam down there before, and I said, Pam, there's an attorney that has an interest in building over there, can he really meet the setbacks? No, it's not buildable. So, nobody was really going after that property, because we always, everybody's under the impression that it's not going to be buildable. Now, how it ever got to the state it's in now, it sure baffles the hell out of me, but that's my concern.
Okay.
And I live right next door, and if you look through that factory, you'll see my water's all the way up my walkway.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to address the board?
My name's Steven Aldridge, 8036 Lakeshore Road, lived over at Lakeshore, just a little over 10 years, not the most knowledgeable guy when it comes to the flood plains and everything, but just from my set of eyes, being on the lake, my, my concern is with the other two gentlemen as well, was with the potential of the flooding and the water rising, so I just wanted to make that statement, is my concern would be the flooding as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sure. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Susan Gao, 8026 Lakeshore, I live next to Steve, who lives next to Ken, and we have that maple ab that goes through our properties, and I was told 18 years ago that I could never build on the other side, I have four lots, I was told I could never get a sewer tap, that because of the flooding, I could never build, and now we have an even worse situation, as I see it, with the swamp and the need to build, and I agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman, that there, you know, once we do it for one, it's going to happen all the way up and down the road, and then my next question is, why can't I get a sewer tap? Why can't I build a house on my property? Are the rules just changing every time I turn around? 18 years ago, I was told no, so I would not like to see it happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one thing?
Sure.
One case does not set a precedent, just so everybody knows, each case is judged on its own merit, so it doesn't set a precedent at all, I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Sure, step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Cam Vozar, 8008 Lakeshore, basically, three houses east of the property, I share the same concerns about the flooding, but really, I think, in my view, if, without the setback, the lot is unbuildable, okay? And so, to me, it's an unbuildable lot. There's not, there's never been anything on that property previously that would merit any exception, in my mind, to the setback. And then as far as the right-of-way there, you know, to, to the lake, we don't know what's going to happen with that, whether that's going to be developed or not, there's no way to know what, what will happen with that. We can't predict the future, I would have never predicted that someone would be proposing to build this particular, on that piece particularly, his property, so I don't think we can assume that that won't happen. I'm also very concerned because of, in order to build that driveway, which I think is about 30 feet, 70? No, but how, how deep is it? I can't, I can't remember exactly.
We're not addressing that.
No, no, but.
Detail in today's, this is, this is purely about whether or not someone can build within an area next to the road. This board has no say in the environmentals, this board has absolutely no say in whether or not the lot's buildable, from an environmental standpoint, that, that's, that's not something this board has purview to.
I'm just concerned about that driveway being underwater.
Right, I'm, thank you very much.
Yeah, so that's what I've.
Appreciate that. Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on. I'd ask the applicant, if, is there anything you would like to add from, what was that? Please step to the microphone now. Yeah, please.
Michael Gersky, yes, I was assured, and I will verify this, that due diligence was done on that property, and it is not a wetlands. I'm not a, an engineer, but I'd like Robbie to address the flooding issue in regard to the lake. Is that, is that okay?
Absolutely, he can, yeah.
Rob McCowen, yeah, a couple of things, when I built the home at 8036 Park, we didn't export or import any fill on that, and to address the issue about the sump pump, those foundations are specially designed, they have to be in accordance with FEMA, MDQ actually comes out and flags the site for any wetland species, which they did at 8036 Park, they would do it again on this site here, just to validate if there's any issues, but the reason the sump pump was running is, I didn't have to put a sump in there, but I did, and then we actually elevated the floor in accordance with the FEMA guidelines, and after the water level went down, the sump pump stopped running, and it's there to quickly evacuate water in the event of a 100-year flood occurrence. There's flood vents in the house, it's designed to accept floodwater as part of the structural design of the foundation, so I just wanted to clarify those issues.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, is there, we're all set. To the board, does anyone on the board have anything that they wish to address at this time, or you want to address it at deliberations?
You mean, as far as questions?
Questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Yep.
As far as the entry to the driveway, it is off of Maple, right? I'm just trying to get a understanding that it's that corner that's, if Maple was there, it would be part of Maple.
Yeah, it looks like it's on part of Maple, it's part of Beach.
Okay. I've been there, but I don't recall exactly when I'm trying to look at this. This drawing looks like it's on Beach, but I know that, that part is on Maple.
Mr. Wyland?
From, from looking at it, my guess is we would address it to Beach, just because emergency services will never find Maple, correct?
I can't hear you.
I said, I said, we'll probably address it off Beach, because emergency personnel will never find Maple.
Does that mean, does that mean they're going to make Beach a road? Is that an association?
That has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that.
No, but you're, for emergency purposes, it's going to have to be able to fire.
It's 8111 Beach.
Well, we, we have to at least have an address that corresponds with something, I mean, that portion of Maple looks like, you know, somebody's yard, so.
Well, even according to the association, it is 8111.
It is 8111 Beach, yes. I imagine that where that goes, where a said driveway would go, would be a site plan issued with the township, correct?
We would double-check an address assignments through the fire department.
Okay.
And the driveway.
That would be the only thing that I would ask, is, you know, if they would have a problem in getting back there, I know once you get back in there, and I know the other gentleman did it on the other side, it just gets very tight back there, so, just if they have a problem with it.
I know when we, at our last meeting.
Yes.
We had a discussion, and it was 100-foot hose was the biggest.
I'm just concerned about that driveway being underwater.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that's what I've said.
Appreciate that. Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on. I'd ask the applicant, is there anything you would like to add from, what was that? Please step to the microphone now. Yeah, please.
Michael Gersky. Yes, I was assured, and I will verify this, that due diligence was done on that property, and it is not a wetlands. I'm not an engineer, but I'd like Robbie to address the flooding issue in regard to the lake. Is that okay?
Absolutely, he can. Yeah.
Rob McCowen. Yeah, a couple things. When I built the home at 8036 Park, we didn't export or import any Phil on that. And to address the issue about the sump pump, those foundations are specially designed. They have to be in accordance with FEMA. MDEQ actually comes out and flags the site for any wetland species, which they did at 8036 Park. They would do it again on this site here, just to validate if there's any issues. But the reason the sump pump was running is I didn't have to put a sump in there, but I did. And then, we actually elevated the floor in accordance with the FEMA guidelines. And after the water level went down, the sump pump stopped running. And it's there to quickly evacuate water in the event of a 100-year flood occurrence. There's flood vents in the house. It's designed to accept floodwater as part of the structural design of the foundation. So, I just wanted to clarify those issues.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, is there, we're all set. To the board, does anyone on the board have anything that they wish to address at this time, or you want to address it at deliberations?
You mean as far as questions?
Questions for the applicant.
Okay. As far as the entry to the driveway, it is off of Maple, right? I'm just trying to get a understanding that it's that corner that's... If Maple was there, it would be part of Maple.
Yeah, it looks like it's on part of Maple, it's part of Beach.
Okay. I've been there, but I don't recall exactly when I'm trying to look at this. This drawing looks like it's on Beach, but I know that that part is on Maple.
Mr. Wyland?
From looking at it, my guess is we would address it to Beach, just because emergency services will never find Maple. Correct? I said, we'll probably address it off Beach because emergency personnel will never find Maple.
Does that mean, does that mean they're going to make Beach a road? Is that an association?
Has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that...
No, but you're, for emergency purposes, it's going to have to be able to fire.
It's 8111 Beach.
Well, we have to at least have an address that corresponds with something, I mean, that portion of Maple looks like somebody's yard, so...
Well, even according to the association, it is 8111 Beach.
It is 8111 Beach, yes. I imagine that where that goes, where a said driveway would go would be a site plan issue with the township, correct?
We would double-check an address assignments through the fire department.
Okay.
In the driveway.
That would be the only thing that I would ask is, you know, if they would have a problem in getting back there. I know once you get back in there, and I know the other gentleman did it on the other side, it just gets very tight back there, so... Just if they have a problem with it.
I know when we, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, and it was 100-foot hose was the biggest safety issue that public safety director had pointed out. So, the ability to get 100-foot hoses, or 1,000-foot, wasn't it? 1,000-foot hose.
Okay.
So, that was, that was the...
That was the biggest safety issue. Okay.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next public hearing.
I got a real quick question.
Sure, absolutely.
I guess for the builder, do you have a sewer tap? Can you tap into the sewer? But I mean, can you?
Yeah.
It's in the sewer, I mean, the property could be in the sewer district because it's of where it's located at.
Yeah.
It won't be built if it doesn't have a sewer tap.
Exactly. And there are not taps on Maple. Okay. So, we will address the remainder of that under new business. Next item is case JZBA 15008, Jeffrey Fourth of 6935 Earhart Road, Whitmore Lake, 48189, for a garage side yard setback and AR requirement of a minimum of 30 feet. Interior side yard setback, section 361584B. The applicant has asked for a 14-foot variance for the side yard setback. The parcel number is B0223100008, and is zoned AR agricultural. Is Mr. Fourth here?
Yes, ma'am.
You can step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And...
Jeffrey M. Fourth, I live 6935 Earhart in Ann Arbor, Michigan. 48105. Yeah, when I started this adventure, the money pit, it's disgusting house. I got a lot of visits from neighbors, and they were all very friendly. They liked what I did, putting in a couple hundred pine trees and 25 fruit trees and building a new porch and fixing things up. And I have plans to build a garage in a normal place, down the end of the driveway, and in a nice location. There is a building in the back that the fellow, I don't know how he, it's three feet from the back property and a few feet from the other side, and it has no garage, and it's mobile, according to the neighbors, so he can move it around. I have no idea how that got there. My request is simple. I just want to build a normal building that mimics the house and will add value and tax value to it, which, by the way, this...
Was paid today.
So, it's now a paying property, and it'll only get better in time. So, actually, when I first started, they said I needed to be in five feet from the fence, and because I wanted to drive, be able to drive to the back of the property in case emergency, or put a trailer back there, not a, you know, like a utility trailer or something. I wanted to fill it in. I talked with the neighbor. I said, hey, I'm going to be putting some soil in here. He goes, you bother me for that? Great, who cares? It's kind of a wilderness little area, and it's not a subdivision setting. It's very rural. Apparently, I'm zoned Ag, and none of the neighborhood neighbors can believe it because there's only one acre. I think property probably had 10 acres or more, and maybe it's grandfathered, I don't know. But anyway, so I submitted a bunch of pictures and plans and stuff. I guess I should have brought some more, but it's simple. It's a normal garage. And I got buy-in from the neighbors. They all like me.
Appreciate it.
So, here they are.
I have the original. I'll give you copies.
Sure.
You can just give us one, that's fine. Do you have more?
Oh, he, yeah, he made copies.
Nice looking garage.
It is.
Can I ask a question?
Anyways, it's no big deal. It's just, I mean, it's like a normal building in a normal place, and then...
Ms. Otto would like to ask a question.
What are you planning to do with the second floor?
With the what?
With the second floor.
It's just going to be like a little workshop. I make handmade, custom knives, and I was going to, you know, just play around with that, put my shop up there and storage. I really have, it's just really the design that I'm interested in because it's matching. You know, eventually, I want to tear down the back of the house. I want to pull the cabinets out of the kitchen, put them into the garage, make it nice. Not going to be a living area. It'll never be a rental property. It'll never, you know, nothing like that at all. You know, I'm going to, it's going to be a real garage with some space.
All right, thank you. You can have a seat.
I just wanted to say one thing, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for laying that out for us. I mean, you had it all marked out really nice. So, it's really, that doesn't always happen. And I just appreciate you doing it. I want to make sure I told you.
I had a pain it three times, but the rain kept getting rid of the pain, so...
Thank you. Mr. Wyland?
Mr. Fourth has found himself in the position of, with our zoning changes, on the reverse side, since he only has a little over an acre there, it would be a legal non-conforming lot. And years ago, we did permit the same setback that you would find in a regular subdivision in that same area. But we've revised that to read that all buildings will meet the setbacks for the Ag district. That's how we ended up in this position. He certainly has taken a real eyesore of a house and cleaned it up. It had grass four or five feet tall. I mean, it was quite the mess. It was an ordinance, regular stop visit, so we certainly appreciate his efforts. And I think what he's proposed will certainly fit into the neighbors' end with the lot, so we fully support it from our side of it.
Thank you very much. Now, is there anyone from the public who would speak for or against? Seeing none? I'm not going to have you up to rebuttal anything because we didn't have any public, so...
I like what he said. I've had some comments about the other neighbors saying, I've never seen that long...
All right. With that being said, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
It's a move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Del Favreau, supported by Colecki. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is old business, in which we have none. And number eight, new business, case JZBA 15007, Mr. Gersky of Groceal, for a variance required side yard setback, reducing it from 30 feet to 15 feet. Discussion.
Well, the one thing I want to add is that we are not going to solve the flooding issues at Horseshoe Lake. So, I don't think that that should be part of this.
Yeah, any environmental DEQ, EPA, FEMA, anything having to do with the actual building, the, that, we don't, the zoning board has, doesn't have any say over unless there's an appeal to something relating to that. And even that's limited. Am I right?
That's true. You may come across, actually, you would go to the Construction Board of Appeals. There is a process where if you're renovating a house that's in the flood plain, and you go over the 50% value of the structure, not the lot, and we determine that that is over the 50, and we order it to be raised, their process would be going to the Construction Board of Appeals for the appeal for that. So, that wouldn't even come before you, so...
Okay. Yeah. So, you know, what worry had before us, again, because we've had this multiple times before, is an SR2 property around a lake in our community that has a setback issue. You know, I do have one question from Mr. Wyland. You know, when I was out at the site, I did notice that Maple is blocked off and posted as no trespassing private property by a cable, like a steel cable or a rope cable or something? Do you know anything about, I mean, that?
I don't know anything about who is in control of the cable, but I'm sure they'll get that rectified.
I'm just curious because this gentleman's, I mean, they're in the right-of-way. That's, that's an issue.
No, that would be my cable. And it's not a maple. It appears that that is Maple because that was cold dry. But if you look where the medical post is, on the east side of that, roads on the east of that into the woods.
Because Maple, okay, because Maple comes into Beach before you get to lane? No, what is the park?
Park, Beach, then Maple. Now, Maple, all intersection. So, if you look where that rope is, if you're looking at that rope, the far left one, that's as close as it, that's about where the 40-foot road is. Now, from there into the woods, that's Maple. We went through this with the association, and I had all surveyed, and I controlled surveying all that stuff.
I guess my question is, what's your concern?
Well, it depends on placement. I mean, I looked at the placement of that in regards to the property, and I don't know. It looks like a mess down there. You guys will have to sort that out, though.
Well, they had a survey, I'm sure.
You guys want to sort that out.
If you look on that first paper you got there that I gave you, if you see that utility pole there?
Hang on.
On that pamphlet, if you see that pole where it's got the pole, that's the utility pole. His property line is right at that utility pole. Now, if you go 30 feet to the south of that, when you see that, then you see where I got a black marker there? That's his property line. Now, if you come back to the west, there's 40 feet from that, that's Maple Road. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, it does. Appreciate that.
So, can I, I mean, so if it's considered a flooded flood plain...
That whole area is...
Well, I mean...
The lake is considered a flood plain, but is this, the DNR would make a judgment on that it's unbuildable, or that's not what we're...
No, I mean, most all of the Horseshoe Lake area is in the flood plain. So, no matter how they build, they will always be in the flood plain. But what's required is that they build per the rules of the state construction code and FEMA, so that it is designed to allow that floodwater to enter and not be dispersed. You know, we're not keeping the water out. We're allowing it to flow in. And they are not to raise the grade of the property. So, that's, that's the goal. As far as it being a wetland, that would be something that DEQ would assign a yea or nay to. That's nothing that we look at, we look at to make sure that it's not. But we certainly wouldn't look at it to make a judgment call on our own to do that.
Okay.
And I, I'm just going to comment because we do have an association. I'm not part of the Horseshoe Lake Association, but on an association map, the wetlands would be, excuse me, the wetlands would be outlined on the association map already, and it's not on there.
Okay. I know the Horseshoe Lake Corporation owns the roads. Is that correct?
That's right.
And we've, we've actually dealt with a lot of requests like this, especially on, I mean, I guess this lot does technically border two roads, but especially on properties that have bordered multiple roads. I don't know that, since Maple is, I don't even know if Maple's developed even down near Short. Do you know by chance? Does anyone know?
No.
No, there's no addresses on Maple.
It's developed from the end of Park and Beach. From there on, it is not built.
Okay. Because I know on Short, it looks like it is.
Yeah, Short is that one little...
Short Road. Right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one, I know this, we're not supposed to be dealing with this, but if I could ask the builder one more time to come up and explain to me, you said you talked to, who did you talk to about the flooding issue, the water issue? Can you go over that just for a minute again?
We're required, according to FEMA guidelines, to set the foundations at a certain level, not only the top of the foundation, but the crawl space elevation and then the corresponding exterior grade. There's very strict tolerances on where those flood vents are, where the crawl space floor is, and what the top of the elevation has to be over 905 feet. So, in terms of flooding, our objective is to not disturb the surrounding ground. That's why I say we didn't import or export Phil on that one. We built the foundation in accordance with FEMA specs. All right. And then, MDEQ, as you were talking about, they actually send a guy out, his name is Kete Geikis, and he will actually walk the entire property at the lake, and he will look at the native species that are there and make a determination whether they're wetland species, invasive species, or native, not wetland species.
So, that has been or has not been done?
Oh, it hasn't been done, but the guidelines are set. So, as long as we adhere to the 905 elevation, there's no reason for FEMA to turn it down.
Okay. Thank you.
Real quick, how many, how many feet above the existing grade is 905 ballpark?
It's probably about four and a half feet.
So, then you're going to, but then you're going to bring Phil in for the driveway so that it can go up to the house, then?
Correct.
And that will be allowed?
Yes. Yeah, because you have to get to the garage. In this case here, we're looking at a carport, so it's not as necessary to do that on this particular site because that could stay at existing grade.
Okay, thanks.
There's also some large trees on the site, which have already been surveyed, and we would like to preserve as many of those as possible, taking note of all the feeder root systems and locations. So, you know, we don't want to try and save a tree that can't be saved, but to the extent that we can, we will.
I'm going to ask one question. I know it's been said, but I just want to confirm, you own the house on the other side of him?
No, I built it as a spec home, and I sold it.
And you sold it?
Mm-hmm.
And so, you're building this site as well?
Yes. And also, another one down the road.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Wyland?
I just wanted to comment on, I've heard the term that they were told by the township lots were non-buildable. I have also heard that in the past, and I, well, we try not to determine that any lot is buildable or non-buildable. It's either legal, non-conforming, or it's legal. And the steps that people are willing to take to try to gain compliance or variance is really up to them, and that really determines whether most of the lots are going to be buildable or non-buildable. And so, if people are willing to exercise under the different guidelines and codes that are out there to apply and try to comply with those codes, they're certainly welcome to do so. And that's, and I've had to tell people here at the office that please don't tell people that things are non-buildable because that's a huge statement.
I think you'd have to see the sentence at the bottom, though. It said, and I think if you otherwise cherry pick on this, it says, because of the lack of developed road frontage or being too small to meet zoning setbacks for a building. So, I think you can cherry pick one of them. So, I take it that they said it was unbuildable because the road is not developed. Yeah.
The only person, no, I'm sorry. The only person that would know that is CGR, and he is now longer employed by the township. Any other board members have any comments, questions, concerns? Well, I think we've seen tremendous number of these in the SR2 district. This was an item that was actually brought up. This was an item that was actually brought up at the last Planning Commission meeting. And, and it's been put on the priority list of the Planning Commission to address SR2 zoning and whether or not there would be some administrative decision-making capability in the future. Because we have seen quite a fit, quite a bit of this. With that being said, I think I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion in case JZBZ 150007, Michael and Lisa Gersky of 24647 Halley Crescent, Groseal, Michigan, 48138, for a variance of the required street side yard setback, a variance of 15 feet from Sections 36, 248, 4B, side yard setback to build a 1,450 square foot home. The property is located at 8111 Beach Avenue in the Horseshoe Lake subdivision. The parcel number is B0208376001 and is zoned SR2, single-family residential. That the Zoning Board of Appeals has found that the applicant has met the conditions necessary in the ordinances of the standards of determination and is requesting the minimal amount necessary in order to build the home. I will note that the property is unique in nature, being both a lakefront, two-road front property, which makes this variance necessary. Support? Motion by Dignan, supported by Daryl Favero. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Otto?
Yes.
Colecki? Yes. Dignan?
Yes.
DeFarvel?
Yes. Vote is four to zero. So, what happens from here is, once you get a copy of the minutes from this meeting from the township, you can then work with the Building Department to move forward with the processes that you need to go through. Okay? Thank you for your investment in the community. Next item is Case JZBA 15008. Before I go there, Lisa, and that first case, it's JZBA, not ZBZ. I apologize for that. You got it? Okay. Case JZBA 15008, Jeffrey Fourth of 6935 Earhart. Questions? Concerns? Discussion? I, I want to say I really appreciate the information. As Mr. Del Favero pointed out, the marking off, that means a lot to us as, you know, we want to be able to go out and do the best job we can. And, you know, you make that job a lot easier when we can see... So, when we can see what's there. Yeah. Okay. With that, I got... You got a question, or...
No, I just... I don't see anything wrong with it at all. That's my...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Case JZBA 150008, Jeffrey M. Fourth, 6935 Earhart Road, Whitmore Lake, Michigan, 48189, for a new garage side yard setback in the AR district, which requires a minimum of 30-foot interior side yard setback per Section 36, 158, 4B. The variance is for 14 feet to the side yard setback. The parcel is B0223100008 and is zoned AR agricultural. The ZBA recognizes that this one acre parcel in the AR district is unique in nature and has accessory buildings on the site that are within closer distance to that, but that the applicant has met the requirements as necessary and laid out in the standards of determination and that the ZBA recommends approval. Support? Or rather, we approve. Sorry, not recommend. Motion by Dignan, supported by Del Favero. I need a roll call vote.
All right. Otto? Colecki? Yes. Dignan?
Yes.
DeFarvel?
Yes. Four to zero. The motion carries.
Yahoo, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for...
I know. It's like, careful what I wish for.
Well, thank you.
After 28 years of marriage, I got divorced. This is my project. I don't know which one's worse, to be honest.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Really appreciate you investing in the community. Absolutely.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Means a lot to us.
I've had so many people come over and just visit. It's unbelievable.
Did they go home, though?
What's that?
Did they go home?
Okay, they don't stick around.
Okay.
Great. So, can I start this weekend? So, what, so what do I do next?
You need to go to the Township Hall once they have a draft copy of the minutes.
The permits have been pulled a long time ago and they just approved it. Does that mean I rent a machine this weekend?
Let me...
Yeah, I mean, I'm a car... I mean, I don't know. I don't know if the machine... Since I'm here, I call that ass.
No problem.
Great. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next item is unfinished business, which there is none. Next item is approval of the minutes from June 1st, 2015. Any questions on the front?
Nope.
Other than...
Except for your missing day.
I was here instead of Mr. Roman.
Yeah.
But, um, anything on the back? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion. Prove the minutes.
Motion by Colecki, supported by Otto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Kind of back up on the question.
Sorry. What question?
With the correction.
Oh, as, as amended. Are you okay with that, Mr. Colecki?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Ms. Otto as well? Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. Next is call to the public, in which we don't have any public. Next is ZBA member comments. Anybody?
I, I have a couple. Just thanks. Thank you, Lisa and Mary, for being here, this spolting. Jim Nelson. Jim Nelson, thank you so much for what you're doing. I really do appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you so much.
Ms. Otto, anything?
No.
Mr. Colecki?
All set. Thank you.
Okay. I would also like to thank Lisa and Mary and Jim as well. It's important that, you know, all of you are involved in order to get this information to the fine folks out there in Northfield Township. All right. Next announcement is our next meeting will be September 21st. Do we have any applicants at this point?
Not at this point.
Not at this point? Okay. That meeting obviously won't happen only if there is agenda items. I, I would like to, and I know we reviewed our bylaws like a year... It was almost a year ago. I noticed some things in looking through them that I'd like to bring forth to possibly clean up. So, maybe that'll go on our next agenda if we don't have two applicants, so... Just so you guys know. Housekeeping meeting. Correct. All right. No other announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Otto, supported by Del Favero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. 7:57.